Alright, cool. Study a little law, find commercial codes. Assistant read it for us.
American Law Institute and the National Conference of Commissioners on Uniform State Laws, reproduced, published, and distributed with the permission of the Permanent Editorial Board for the Uniform Commercial Code for the limited purposes of study, teaching, and academic research. Our collection aims to show each section of the UCC in the version which is most widely adopted by states. That means we will not always display the most current revision if that revision has not achieved widespread adoption among American legislatures.
First, we go to definitions. To be honest, I don't really know much about this. Just something that, uh, interests me. Start getting into it, start studying it, see how it can be useful. Heard many people talking about it. Right now, I'm just really having to open and study with y'all, I mean, like shit. More for want to get into something else. Just leave a comment. And we just dive into that subject. Really new to this. First, I just wanna let y'all know, uh, reserve and preserve all my rights. Now, currently in the future. Just go get into this. So first, we gotta start with the definitions, so we could at least have an understanding of what's going on. What they talking about when we read other sections. Start with this first.
Unless the context otherwise requires, words or phrases defined in this section, or in the additional definitions contained in other articles of the Uniform Commercial Code that apply to particular articles or parts thereof, have the meaning stated; b) Subject to definitions contained in other articles of the Uniform Commercial Code that apply to particular articles or parts thereof.
Okay, alright. You know, from what's the definitions?
One, action: In the sense of a judicial proceeding includes recoupment, counterclaim, set off, suit in equity, and any other proceeding in which rights are determined. Two, aggrieved party means a party entitled to pursue a remedy. Three, agreement, as distinguished from contract, means the bargain of the parties in fact, as found in their language or inferred from other circumstances, including course of performance, course of dealing, or usage of trade as provided in Section 1 to 303. Four, bank means a person engaged in the business of banking and includes a savings bank, savings and loan association, credit union, and trust company. Five, bearer means a person in possession of a negotiable instrument, document of title, or certificated security that is payable to bearer or endorsed in blank. Six, bill of lading means a document evidencing the receipt of goods for shipment issued by a person engaged in the business of transporting or forwarding goods. Seven, branch includes a separately incorporated foreign branch of a bank. Eight, burden of establishing: A fact means the burden of persuading the trier of fact that the existence of the fact is more probable than its nonexistence. Nine, buyer in ordinary course of business means a person that buys goods in good faith, without knowledge that the sale violates the rights of another person in the goods, and in the ordinary course from a person other than a pawnbroker in the business of selling goods of that kind. A person buys goods in the ordinary course if the sale to the person comports with the usual or customary practices in the kind of business in which the seller is engaged or with the seller's own usual or customary practices. A person that sells oil, gas, or other minerals at the wellhead or minehead is a person in the business of selling goods of that kind. A buyer in ordinary course of business may buy for cash, by exchange of other property, or on secured or unsecured credit, and may acquire goods or documents of title under a preexisting contract for sale, only a buyer that takes possession of the goods or has a right. To recover the goods from the seller under article may second be a buyer in ordinary course of business. Buyer in ordinary course of business does not include a person that acquires goods in a transfer in bulk or as security for or in total or partial satisfaction of a. Money debt. Ten, conspicuous, with reference to a term, means so written, displayed, or presented that a reasonable person against which it is to operate ought to have noticed it. Whether a term is conspicuous or not is a decision for the court. Conspicuous terms include the following: a) A heading in capitals equal to or greater in size than the surrounding text, or in contrasting type, font, or color to the surrounding text of the same or lesser size; and b) Language in the body of a record or display in larger type than the surrounding text, or in contrasting type, font, or color to the surrounding text of the same size, or set off from surrounding text of the same size by symbols or other marks that call attention to the. Language. Eleven, consumer means an individual who enters into a transaction primarily for personal, family, or household purposes. Twelve, contract, as distinguished from agreement, means the total legal obligation that results from the party's agreement as determined by the Uniform Commercial Code as supplemented by any other applicable laws. Thirteen, creditor includes a general creditor, a secured creditor, a lien creditor, and any representative of creditors, including an assignee for the benefit of creditors, a trustee in bankruptcy, a receiver in equity, and an executor or administrator of an insolvent debtor's or assignor's estate. Fourteen, defendant includes a person in the position of defendant in a counterclaim, crossclaim, or third-party claim. Fifteen, delivery, with respect to an instrument, document of title, or chattel paper, means voluntary transfer of possession. Sixteen, document of title includes bill of lading, doc warrant, doc receipt, warehouse receipt or order for the delivery of goods, and also any other document which in the regular course of business or financing is treated as adequately evidencing that the person in possession of it is entitled to receive, hold, and dispose of the document and the goods it covers. To be a document of title, a document must purport to be issued by or addressed to a baili and purport to cover goods in the baili's possession which are either identified or are fungible portions of an identified mass. Seventeen, fault means a default, breach, or wrongful act or omission. Eighteen, fungible goods means: a) Goods of which any unit by nature or usage of trade is the equivalent of any other like unit; or b) Goods that by agreement are treated as equivalent. Nineteen, genuine means free of forgery or counterfeiting. Twenty, good faith, except as otherwise provided in Article V, means honesty in fact and the observance of reasonable commercial standards of fair dealing. Twenty-one, holder means: a) The person in possession of a negotiable instrument that is payable either to bearer or to an identified person that is the person in possession; or b) The person in possession of a document of title if the goods are deliverable either to bearer or to the order of the person in possession. Twenty-two, insolvency proceeding includes an assignment for the benefit of creditors or other proceeding intended to liquidate or rehabilitate the estate of the person involved. Twenty-three, insolvent means: a) Having generally ceased to pay debts in the ordinary course of business other than as a result of bona fide dispute; b) Being unable to pay debts as they become due; or c) Being insolvent within the meaning of federal bankruptcy law. Twenty-four, money means a medium of exchange currently authorized or adopted by a domestic or foreign government. The term includes a monetary unit of account established by an intergovernmental organization or by agreement between two or more countries. Twenty-five, organization means a person other than an individual. Twenty-six, party, as distinguished from third-party, means a person that has engaged in a transaction or made an agreement subject to the Uniform Commercial Code. Twenty-seven, person means an individual, corporation, business trust, estate, trust, partnership, limited liability company, association, joint venture, government, governmental subdivision, agency, or instrumentality, public corporation, or any other legal or commercial entity. Twenty-eight, present value means the amount as of a date certain of one or more sums payable in the future, discounted to the date certain by use of either an interest rate specified by the parties if that rate is not manifestly unreasonable at the time the transaction is entered into or if an in- Interest rate is not so specified, a commercially reasonable rate that takes into account the facts and circumstances at the time the transaction is entered into. Twenty-nine, purchase means taking by sale, lease, discount, negotiation, mortgage, pledge, lien, security interest, issue or reissue, gift, or any other voluntary transaction creating an interest in property. Thirty, purchaser means a person that takes by purchase. Thirty-one, record means information that is inscribed on a tangible medium or that is stored in an electronic or other medium and is retrievable in perceivable form. Thirty-two, remedy means any remedial right to which an aggrieved party is entitled with or without resort to a tribunal. Thirty-three, representative means a person empowered to act for another, including an agent, an officer of a corporation or association, and a trustee, executor, or administrator of an estate. Thirty-four, right includes remedy. Thirty-five, security interest means an interest in personal property or fixtures which secures payment or performance of an obligation. Security interest includes any interest of a consignor and a buyer of accounts, chattel paper, a payment intangible, or a promissory note in a transaction that is subject to Article 9. Security interest does not include the special property interest of a buyer of goods on identification of those goods to a contract for sale under Section 2 to 505. The right of a seller or lessor of goods under Article 2 or 2a to retain or acquire possession of the goods is not a security interest, but a seller or lessor may also acquire a security interest by complying with Article 9, the retention or reservation of title by a seller of goods notwithstanding shipment or delivery. To the buyer under Section 2 to 401 is limited in effect to a reservation of a security interest. Whether a transaction in the form of a lease creates a security interest is determined pursuant to Section 1 to 203. Thirty-six, send in connection with a writing, record, or notice means: a) To deposit in the mail or deliver for transmission by any other usual means of communication with postage or cost of transmission provided for and properly addressed, and, in the case of an instrument, to an address specified thereon or otherwise agreed, or if there be none to any address reasonable under the circumstances; or b) In any other way to cause to be received any record or notice within the time it would have, arrived if properly sent. Thirty-seven, signed includes using any symbol executed or adopted with present intention to adopt or accept a writing. Thirty-eight, state means a state of the United States, the District of Columbia, Puerto Rico, the United States Virgin Islands, or any territory or insular possession subject to the jurisdiction of the United States. Thirty-nine, surety includes a guarantor or other secondary obligor. Forty, term means a portion of an agreement that relates to a particular matter. Forty-one, unauthorized signature means a signature made without actual, implied, or apparent authority. The term includes a forgery. Forty-two, warehouse receipt means a receipt issued by a person engaged in the business of storing goods for hire. Forty-three, writing includes printing, typewriting, or any other intentional reduction to tangible form. Written has a corresponding meaning. Part Two: General Definitions and Principles of Interpretation up Section 1 to 202. Notice-Knowledge. A, subject- Has reason to know that it exists. B, knowledge means actual knowledge. Knows has a correspond- A, subject to subsection F: A person has notice of a fact if the person, one, has actual knowledge of it; two, has received a notice or notification of it; or three, from all the facts and circumstances known to the person at the time in question, has reason to know that it exists. B, knowledge means actual knowledge. Knows has a corresponding meaning. C, discover, learn, or words of similar import refer to knowledge rather than to reason to know. D, a person notifies or gives a notice or notification to another person by taking such steps as may be reasonably required to inform the other person in ordinary course, whether or not the other person actually comes to know of it. E, subject to subsection F: A person receives a notice or notification when: one, it comes to that person's attention; or, two, it is duly delivered in a form reasonable under the circumstances at the place of business through which the contract was made or at another location held out by that person as the place for receipt of such communications. F, notice, knowledge, or a notice or notification received by an organization is effective for a particular transaction from the time it is brought to the attention of the individual conducting that transaction, and, in any event, from the time it would have been brought to the individual's attention if the organization had exercised due diligence. An organization exercises due diligence if it maintains reasonable routines for communicating significant information to the person conducting the transaction and there is reasonable compliance with the routines. Due diligence does not require an individual acting for the organization to communicate information unless the communication is part of the individual's regular duties or the indiv- Jacksonville, Florida Asbestos and Mesothelioma. Website-
So that's UCC 1-202, notice. Alright. At least distinguished from security interest. And so we all learning here. May have to go back probably about three times, you know, repetition, uh, help things sink into the sub-cautions. And the information become part of you. Myself, I'm learning as well, it's my first time looking at this.
A, whether a transaction in the form of a lease creates a lease or a security interest is determined by the facts of each case. B, a transaction in the form of a lease creates a security interest if the consideration that the lesssee is to pay the lessor for the right to possession and use of the goods is an obligation for the term of the lease and is not subject to termination by the lesssee, and: one, the original term of the lease is equal to or greater than the remaining economic life of the goods; two, the lesssee is bound to renew the lease for the remaining economic life of the goods or is bound to become the owner of the goods; three, the lesssee has an option to renew the lease for the remaining economic life of the goods for no additional consideration or for nominal additional consideration upon compliance with the lease agreement; or four, the lesssee has an option to become the owner of the goods for no additional consideration or for nominal additional consideration upon compliance with the lease agreement. C, a transaction in the form of a lease does not create a security interest merely because: one, the present value of the consideration the lesssee is obligated to pay the lessor for the right to possession and use of the goods is substantially equal to or is greater than the fair market value of the goods at the time the lease is entered into; two, the lesssee assumes risk of loss of the goods; three, the lesssee agrees to pay with respect to the goods, taxes, insurance, filing, recording, or registration fees, or service or maintenance- About AII. A, maintenance costs. Four, the lesssee has an option to renew the lease or to become the owner of the goods. Five, the lesssee has an option to renew the lease for a fixed rent that is equal to or greater than the reasonably predictable fair market rent for the use of the goods for the term of the renewal at the time the option is to be performed; or six, the lesssee has an option to become the owner of the goods for a fixed price that is equal to or greater than the reasonably predictable fair market. Value of the goods at the time the option is to be performed. D, additional consideration is nominal if it is less than the lesssee's reasonably predictable cost of performing under the lease agreement if the option is not exercised. Additional consideration is not nominal if: one, when the option to renew the lease is granted to the lesssee, the rent is stated to be the fair market rent for the use of the goods for the term of the renewal determined at the time the option is to be performed; or two, when the option to become the owner of the goods is granted to the lesssee, the price is stated to be the fair market value of the goods determined at the time the option is to be performed. E, the remaining economic life of the goods and reasonably predictable fair market rent, fair market value, or cost of performing under the lease agreement must be determined with reference to the facts and circumstances at the time the transaction is entered into. Section 1 to 202. Notice-Knowledge. Up Section 1 to- The person acquires them. One, in return for a binding commitment to extend credit- Septa, as otherwise provided in Articles 3, 4, and 5, and 6, a person gives value for rights if the person acquires them. One, in return for a binding commitment to extend credit or for the extension of immediately available credit, whether or not drawn upon, and whether or not a chargeback is provided for in the event of difficulties in collection. Two, as security for, or in total or partial satisfaction of a preexisting claim. Three, by accepting delivery under a preexisting contract for. Purchase, or four, in return for any consideration sufficient to support a simple contract. Section 1 to 203. Least distinguished- Least distinguished distinguished from security interest. Agree that the law either of the state or of such other state or nation shall govern their Except as otherwise provided in this section, when a transaction bears a reasonable relation to this state and also to another state or nation, the parties may agree that the law either of the state or of such other state or nation shall govern their rights and duties. B, in the absence of an agreement effective under subsection, A, and except as provided in subsection C, the Uniform Commercial Code applies to transactions bearing an appropriate relation to this state. C, if one of the following provisions of the Uniform Commercial Code specifies the applicable law that provision governs and a contrary agreement is effective only to the extent permitted by the law so specified. One, section two to four hundred and two. Two, sections two A one oh A, except as otherwise provided in subsection B or elsewhere in the Uniform Commercial Cod. Code, the effect of provisions of the Uniform Commercial Code may be varied by agreement. B, the obligations of good faith, diligence, reasonableness, and care prescribed by the Uniform Commercial Code may not be disclaimed by agreement. The parties by agreement may determine the standards by which the performance of those obligations is to be measured if those standards are not manifestly unreasonable. Whenever the Uniform Commercial Code requires an action to be taken within a reasonable time, a time that is not manifestly unreasonable may be fixed by agreement. C, the presence in certain provisions of the Uniform Commercial Code of the phrase "unless otherwise agreed" or words of similar import does not imply that the effect of other provisions may not be varied by agreement under this section. Section one to three hundred and three. Course of performance, course of dealing, and usage of trade. A, a course of performance is a sequence of conduct between the parties to a particular transaction that exists if: One, the agreement of the parties with respect to the transaction involves repeated occasions for performance by a party. And, two, the other party, with knowledge of the nature of the performance and opportunity for objection to it, accepts the performance or acquiesces in it without objection. B, a course of dealing is a sequence of conduct concerning previous transactions between the parties to a particular transaction that is fairly to be regarded as establishing a common basis of understanding for interpreting their expressions and other conduct. C, a usage of trade is any practice or method of dealing having such regularity of observance in a place, vocation, or trade as to justify an expectation that it will be observed with respect to the transaction in question. The existence and scope of such a usage must be proved as facts. If it is established that such a usage is embodied in a trade code or similar record, the interpretation of the record is a question of law. D, a course of performance or a course of dealing between the parties or usage of trade in the vocation or trade in which they are engaged or of which they are or should be aware is relevant in ascertaining the meaning of the party's agreement may give particular meaning to specific terms of the agreement and may supplement or qualify the terms of the agreement. A usage of trade applicable in the place in which part of the performance under the agreement is to occur may be so utilized as to that part of the performance. E, except as otherwise provided in subsection F. The express terms of an agreement and any applicable course of performance, course of dealing, or usage of trade must be construed whenever reasonable as consistent with each other. If such a construction is unreasonable: One, express terms prevail over course of performance, course of dealing, and usage of trade. Two, course of performance prevails over course of dealing and usage of trade. And three, course of dealing prevails over usage of trade. F, subject to section two to two hundred and nine. A course of performance is relevant to show a waiver or modification of any term inconsistent with the course of performance. G, evidence of a relevant usage of trade offered by one party is not admissible unless that party has given the other party notice that the court finds sufficient to prevent unfair surprise to the other party. Section one to three hundred and two. Variation by agreement. Up section one to three hundred and four. Obligation of good faith. Uniform Commercial Code Toolbox. About uniform laws. State uniform commercial codes. Sponsored listings. David N. Iancu. Premium. Four one four three one zero six six zero. Immler Record. The interpretation of the record is a question of law. D, a course of performance or a course of dealing between the parties or usage of trade in the vocation or trade in which they are engaged or of which they are or should be aware is relevant in ascertaining the meaning of the party's agreement may give particular meaning to specific terms of the agreement and may supplement or qualify the terms of the agreement. A usage of trade applicable in the place in which part of the performance under the agreement is to occur may be so utilized as to that part of the performance. E, except as otherwise provided in subsection F. The express terms of an agreement and any applicable course of performance, course of dealing, or usage of trade must be construed whenever reasonable as consistent with each other. If such a construction is unreasonable: One, express terms prevail over course of performance, course of dealing, and usage of trade. Two, course of performance prevails over course of dealing and usage of trade. And three, course of dealing prevails over usage of trade. F, subject to section two to two hundred and nine. A course of performance is relevant to show a waiver or modification of any term inconsistent with the course of performance. G, evidence of a relevant usage of trade offered by one party is not admissible unless that party has given the other party notice that the court finds sufficient to prevent unfair surprise to the other party. Section one to three hundred and two. Variation by agreement. Up section one to three hundred and four. Obligation of good faith. Uniform Commercial Code Toolbox. About uniform Code Toolbox. About uniform laws. Section one to three hundred and five. Remedies to be liberally administered. A, the remedies provided by the Uniform Commercial Code must be liberally administered to the end that the aggrieved party may be put in as good a position as if the other party had fully performed but neither consequential or special damages nor penal damages may be had except as specifically provided in the Uniform Commercial Code or by other rule of law. B, any right or obligation declared by the Uniform Commercial Code is enforceable by action unless the provision declaring it specifies a different and limited effect. Section one to three hundred and four. Obligation of good faith. Up section one to three hundred and six. Waiver or renunciation of claim or right after breach. Uniform Commercial Code Toolbox. About uniform laws. Third-party documents. A document in due form purporting to be a bill of lading, policy, or certificate of insurance, official wares, or inspector's certificate, consular invoice, or any other document authorized or required by the contract to be issued by a third party is prima facie evidence of its own authenticity and genuineness and of the facts stated in the document by the third party. Section one to three hundred and six. Waiver or renunciation of claim or right after breach. Up section one to three hundred and eight. Performance or acceptance under reservation of rights. Uniform Commercial Code Toolbox. About uniform law Under reservation of rights. A, a party that with explicit reservation of rights performs or promises performance or assents to performance in a manner demanded or offered by the other party does not thereby prejudice the rights reserved. Such words as "without prejudice," "under protest," or the like are sufficient. B, subsection A, does not apply to an accord and satisfaction. Section one to three hundred and seven. Prima facie evidence by th- Or performance or require collateral or additional collateral at will or when the party deems itself insecure or words of similar import means that the party has power to do so only if that party in good faith believes that the prospect of payment or performance is impaired. The burden of establishing lack of good faith is on the party against which the power has been exercised. Section one to th- Or performance or require collateral or additional collateral at will or when the party deems itself insecure or words of similar import means that the party has power to do so only if that party in good faith believes that the prospect of payment or performance is impaired. The burden of establishing lack of good faith is on the party against which the power has been exercised. Section one to three hundred and eight. Performance or acceptance under reservation of rights. Up section one to three hundred and ten. Subordinated obligations. Uniform Com- Person obligated or a creditor may subordinate its right to performance of an obligation by Section one to three hundred and ten. Subordinated obligations. An obligation may be issued as subordinated to performance of another obligation of the person obligated or a creditor may subordinate its right to performance of an obligation by agreement with either the person obligated or another creditor of the person obligated. Subordination does not create a security interest as against either the common debtor or a subordinated creditor. Section one to three hundred and nine. Option to accelerate at will. Up UCC. Primary Tabs. A civil action is commenced by filing a complaint with the court. Notes. As amended April 30, 2007 (F. December 1, 2007). Notes of Advisory Committee on Rules (1937). 1. Rule 5 (E) defines what constitutes filing with the court. 2. This rule governs the commencement of all actions, including those brought by or against the United States or an officer or agency thereof, regardless of whether service is to be made personally pursuant to Rule 4 (D) or otherwise pursuant to Rule 4 (E). 3. With this rule compare former Equity Rule 12 (Issue of subpoena, time for answer), and the following statutes and other similar statutes, which provide a similar method for commencing an action. USC Title 28. Section 45 (Former): District Courts, Practice and Procedure in Certain Cases Under Interstate Commerce Laws. Section 762 (C. 1402): Petition in suit against United States. Section 766 (C. 2409): Partition suits where United States is tenant in common or joint tenant. 4. This rule provides that the first step in an action is the filing of the complaint. Under Rule 4 (A), this is to be followed forthwith by issuance of a summons and its delivery to an officer for service. Other rules providing for dismissal for failure to prosecute suggest a method available to attack unreasonable delay in prosecuting an action after it has been commenced. When a federal or state statute of limitations is pleaded as a defense, a question may arise under this rule whether the mere filing of the complaint stops the running of the statute or whether any further step is required, such as service of the summons and complaint or their delivery to the marshal for service. The answer to this question may depend on whether it is competent for the Supreme Court exercising the power to make rules of procedure without affecting substantive rights to vary the operation of statutes of limitations. The requirement of Rule 4 (A), that the clerk shall forthwith issue the summons and deliver it to the marshal for service, will reduce the chances of such a question arising. Committee Notes on Rules (2007 Amendment). The caption of Rule 3 has been amended as part of the general restyling of the civil rules to make them more easily understood and to make style and terminology consistent throughout the rules. These changes are intended to be stylistic only. Title 2. Commencing and Action. Service of process, pleadings, motions, and orders up Rule 4. Summons. Federal Rules of Civil Procedure Toolbox. WEX Civil Procedure. Overview. Sponsored Listings. Russell D. Nicolay. Premium. Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Website email profile. Paul Danziger. Danziger. Premium. 800- Under Rule 4 (A), this is to be followed forthwith by issuance of a summons and its delivery to an officer for service. Other rules providing for dismissal for failure to prosecute suggest a method available to attack unreasonable delay in prosecuting an action after it has been commenced. When a federal or state statute of limitations is pleaded as a defense, a question may arise under this rule whether the mere filing of the complaint stops the running of the statute or whether any further step is required, such as service of the summons and complaint or their delivery to the marshal for service. The answer to this question may depend on whether it is competent for the Supreme Court exercising the power to make rules of procedure without affecting substantive rights to vary the operation of statutes of limitations. The requirement of Rule 4 (A), that the clerk shall forthwith issue the summons and deliver it to the marshal for service will reduce the chances of such a question arising. Committee Notes on Rules (2007 Amendment). The caption of Rule 3 has been amended as part of the general restyling of the civil rules to make them more easily understood and to make style and terminology consistent throughout the rules. These changes are intended to be stylistic only. Title 2. Commencing and Action. Service of process, pleadings, motions, and orders up Rule 4. Summons. Notes of Advisory Committee on Rules (1937). 1. Rule 5 (E) defines what constitutes filing with the court. 2. This rule governs the commencement- A. Name the court and the parties. B. Be directed to the defendant. C. State the name and address of the plaintiff's attorney or, if unrepresented, of the plaintiff. D. State the time within which the defendant must appear and defend. E. Notify the defendant that a failure to appear and defend will result in a default judgment against the defendant for the relief demanded in the complaint. F. Be signed by the clerk. And G. Bear the court's seal. Two amendments. The court may permit a summons to be amended. B. Issuance. On or after filing the complaint, the plaintiff may present a summons to the clerk for signature and seal. If the summons is properly completed, the clerk must sign, seal, and issue it to the plaintiff for service on the defendant. A summons or a copy of a summons that is addressed to multiple defendants must be issued for each defendant to be served. C. Service. One in general. A summons must be served with a copy of the complaint. The plaintiff is responsible for having the summons and complaint served within the time allowed by Rule 4 (M) and must furnish the necessary copies to the person who makes service. Two, by whom? Any person who is at least eighteen years old and not a party may serve a summons and complaint. Three, by a marshal or someone specially appointed. At the plaintiff's request, the court may order that service be made by a United States marshal or deputy marshal or by a person specially appointed by the court. The court must so order if the plaintiff is authorized to proceed in forma popera under 28 U.S.C. Section 1915 or as a seaman under 28 U.S.C. Section 1916. D. Waiving service. One. Requesting a waiver. An individual, corporation, or association that is subject to service under Rule 4 (E), F., or H., has a duty to avoid unnecessary expenses of serving the summons. The plaintiff may notify such a defendant that an action has been commenced and request that the defendant waive service of a summons. The notice and request must: A. Be in writing and be addressed. I. To the individual defendant or Two. For a defendant subject to service under Rule 4 (H.) to an officer, a managing or general agent, or any other agent authorized by appointment or by law to receive service of process. B. Name the court where the complaint was filed. C. Be accompanied by a copy of the complaint, two copies of the waiver form appended to this Rule 4, and a prepaid means for returning the form. D. Inform the defendant, using the form appended to this Rule 4, of the consequences of waiving and not waiving service. E. State the date when the request is sent. F. Give the defendant a reasonable time of at least thirty days after the request was sent or at least sixty days if sent to the defendant outside any judicial district of the United States to return the waiver, and G. Be sent by first-class mail or other reliable means. Two. Failure to waive. If a defendant located within the United States fails, without good cause, to sign and return a waiver requested by a plaintiff located within the United States, the court must impose on the defendant: A. The expenses later incurred in making service, and B. The reasonable expenses, including attorney's fees, of any motion required to collect those service expenses. Three. Time to answer after a waiver. A defendant who, before being served with process, timely returns a waiver need not serve an answer to the complaint until sixty days after the request was sent.